We do have an 11 o'clock time, so we'll take up a couple of H items. Some of these are gonna take longer than others, some have to bounce around a little bit. So let's take up item H2.
Yeah, H2 is as a follow-up to some direction related to unilateral increase in the compensation in terms of benefits to the county employees. We all know health insurance premiums have increased. And so I received direction to essentially prepare footwork for increasing the Flex Plan or health insurance premium contribution by the employer in an amount equal to $15 per month per employee for all Lassen County regularly benefited employees. Nine, count them, nine resolutions are attached therein. Essentially, eight of them deal with each of the bargaining units, excuse me, seven of them with bargaining units and one for the unrepresented. And then there is one resolution that is attended to and needs to go to PERS, and that is also attached. That is the effort that must go into that kind of a change across the board. And interestingly, the bargaining units must have also been consulted and agreed to the increase. They have to agree to an increase. And because they may conclude, and this is why their assent is required, that any increase by you should be dedicated to a different area rather than, say, to the Flex Plan or to the insurance or something of the like. So Myers-Millieus-Brown Act requires, not the Ralph M. Brown Act, but the Myers-Millieus-Brown Act requires their assent. And we have acquired it as it relates to all of the bargaining units. The original signatures are in the possession of Ms. Douglas. And if the, Sid Court, if the Board sees fit to approve resolutions, I forgot my place. If the Board sees fit to approve the resolutions as presented, then of course the authorized resolutions will be original. So I don't know if you have any questions or not, but that's the essence of it. And there you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I have is, well, so we can have to pass these one at a time, or can you do it?
I think you could do it en masse. Yes? Yes?
Any other questions, Board members? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board? I'll make the motion to approve the nine resolutions.
Just for the record. Thank you. The nine resolutions submitted to the Board pursuant to Agenda Item H2 here today?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Is that enough for you, Madam Clerk? Is that yes? Thank you.
Well, I have a question. I'm looking at the titles on the nine resolutions.
Excellent point.
And we have, it looks like we have four of them that relate to peace officers.
It's true. They fragmented off to some degree in past years.
But on the master resolution, we only have the peace officers listed in here once. And we have management for, oh, that's the peace officer department, they're in there twice.
Bit twice.
So we have, but I guess when I keep a list here and I try to match it up with the resolutions here.
Yes, it's not the same.
No.
Because the names that PERS has for bargaining units is not the same names that we use, although they include the same employees. They were changed by name at least in some years past. But what you show under Code 3, LC Peace Officers/Deputy Sheriff's Association, is actually two separate groups. And then likewise, under Code 10, LCPo Management is a separate group from the Supervisors Association, as I understand it. Yes, so that's actually inclusive of four groups. Yet, yet they retain the same PERS code and they also retain the same contribution per month for, you know, an employee by himself, an employee with retiree or family. And...
Well, I go through here and I don't find one of these for the Appointed Confidential ones which are separate from your new names.
That should have been the last one. Well, that's correct. There is no MOU with the Appointed Confidential, correct? Because it's not a bargain, it's an unrepresented group, if you will. And so there's no individual to sign on their behalf.
So does the last one is the one that pertains to that one?
Correct.
Who else besides this one?
Who else besides this one?
Who else would have a contract?
Well, that's it. So I think what you can, let me explain it a different way. We have approximately 420 employees in the county, the majority of which are represented. And then there is this group that is unrepresented. Typically, the electeds, the appointed department heads and the confidential employees, okay? They are unrepresented. So what I did was, you know, what I did, what was done in part for me, thank you, Ms. Douglas, was the MOUs, I almost took credit for something I didn't do. I'd be like a lawyer. Well, let's wait and see if something goes wrong. So what we did was, we specifically identified by resolution for each of the MOUs, then there was a resolution for, you know, what was left over essentially. There's a specific identification of the employees that are covered by the MOUs. And then the last resolution for which there is no one essentially to sign other than the Board, because there's no bargaining unit, no representative, covers everyone else. So that it essentially, no one's left out.
Okay. You answer my question.
Okay.
If there is a way to make things confusing, those have been, and I'm really glad Cheryl is on top of it.
It's not as easy as it looks.
Oh, the good old days when we just had LCEA and the peace officers and that was it. And the road workers had to be separate, so. All righty, so it's been moved, but we have to get this sent in.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, is there any public comment before we take action?
What is the fiscal impact to the county per year? Just curious.
We calculated that at budget time at about $78,000 for an entire year. Now, there are a couple of caveats to that. Not everyone takes the benefits. We can't with certainty anticipate who will and will not take the benefits. But if everyone were to take the benefits, it would be approximately $78,000 annually. Now, this is gonna be implemented in the middle of the fiscal year, so roughly it would be about half that.
And the half is gonna be spread amongst the various funds. So road people pay for road, the Health and Social Service pays for Health and Social Service, so the actual general fund, general fund is probably of that remainder, you know, maybe.
I believe, the way it works, is it comes out of each department, just like every salary benefit does.
But I was gonna say, but how it's paid for, the general fund is only responsible for maybe about 20% of the budget. The rest of it comes from the various restrictive ones.
Correct, that's not right.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else under public comment? All righty, it's been moved and sent in. All of his favor say aye.
Aye.
Take your chair votes. Aye. All righty. Okay, let's, we'll take up our 11 o'clock. Item, item D1.
Proclamation. Which of you are this to?
There's someone here from the Chair, so I hope that the Chair will probably be here to do that. Or not. And is...
I believe the retiree, retiree is not gonna attend the Board meeting.
Okay, would it be better to put this off to another meeting?
I guess so.
For those of you that know Lee, that you would know, and she goes by Lee. She doesn't go necessarily, even though her given name is Joyce Wilson, it's Lee. And Lee works as clerk in the jail. She's the light. And I'm personally, having had a lot of interaction with Lee over the course of years, I am sorry to see her go. She has always been, even though she works in a fairly dismal environment that is a jail, she's always been a treat to interact with on a professional level.
Well, I'm sure they'll be having some sort of like a dinner or a luncheon or something for their employee, and maybe she'll probably be there, so I would be the Chair for some of the present fact of the resolution.
Normally, I would read the proclamation, but I know you have, you know, the working relationship. Would you like to do the honors after we read it into the record?
If you'd like me to do that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that.
So first, so do we have, looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I have that.
Oh, second?
I'm very, I have that. I have that, all right.
All right, all of his favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I'm sorry that Joyce, Lee isn't present, because personally I'd like to see her squirt a little when I read this. But Joyce Lee Wilson, where at Joyce Lee Wilson, began her employment with Lassen County on September 26, 2004, in the position of correctional clerk, a position she held until her retirement on July 19, 2014. Now, the clerk position is the hub of everything that occurs in the jail. Staff would come with a correctional clerk to make everything better when they were unsure how to handle unusual things that come up on a daily basis. Because of this, Lee quickly took over as the mother figure in the office. She took care of others and made sure that things were going smoothly. And whereas Joyce Lee Wilson has a great sense of humor and was always trying to make people smile. Lee's background consisted of being a school bus driver prior to her employment with the Sheriff's Office. This prior experience helped her deal with the unruly people, mostly staff, of the Sheriff's Department, and she will be greatly missed. Whereas Joyce Lee Wilson was a friend to many and everyone enjoyed working with her. She was always there when the office needed someone to work. She was always willing to come in if you needed her. Lee was a loyal, dedicated employee of the Sheriff's Office, and she will be greatly missed. No one will be able to fill the void that she left behind when she retired. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of the County of Lassen that Joyce Lee Wilson be commended for nearly 10 years of service to the citizens of Lassen County and that the Board Supervisors wishes her well in her many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I was also gonna say something, I knew she was retiring, I knew, I was gonna say something, but it is so interesting that the second where at is?
Yes.
She was a school bus driver, I knew the two, I had to laugh because I was one of those.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the recognition committee presentation. We begin then with Michael Carney. In appreciation for your 15 years of employment with the County of Lassen, we, the Lassen County Board of Supervisors, would like to take this opportunity to present you with a certificate of recognition. And thank you for your time, efforts, and commitment.
I do believe we do have one here, this is a 10-year award.
Oh, Deborah? Deborah Rivas. Hi. Join the party.
Thank you.
The certificate is presented to Deborah Rivas in appreciation for your 10 years of employment with the County of Lassen. We, the Lassen County Board of Supervisors, would like to take this opportunity to present you with this certificate of recognition and thank you for your time, efforts, and commitment.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's another, another item.
Why don't you read, Karen, now you can just give it to her, she's not gonna be here, she's probably not gonna come to a future meeting.
This is a certificate of recognition for Karen Fauch for 25 years. In appreciation for your 25 years of employment with the County of Lassen, we, the Lassen County Board of Supervisors, would like to take this opportunity to present you with a certificate of recognition and thank you for your time, efforts. 25 years is quite a, quite a milestone.
I might just say a word about Karen Fauch. I'm sorry she's not here today, I wish she was. Karen's been around the fixture of the county for a long, long time. And I've grown to know her in several capacities from when I started in the planning department. She's in the auditor's office, to be in elected officials together, and now her retirement. And we haven't always agreed on many issues, but Karen's always been someone who has kept the county's interest at heart and the taxpayers' interest at heart. And she's always been a very professional person to work with, and I'm gonna miss her in her retirement. I think she's been just a great asset to the county.
And since she's not here, I'd like to say something also. I appreciate Karen in many different capacities as well, but mostly for being a wisecracker. She's always got a snappy comeback, she's fun to work with, and I'm gonna miss her.
Very good, well, thank you for the comments, yeah. I've also enjoyed their relationship. It's been 25 years, quite a service to the county. Like I said a few months ago, that's one of the things that I really learned since I've been here, just what a big team of people to make this place go. Until you've really been involved, if you're, you know, just to the normal citizen on the outside, you really have no idea what all the moving parts are to a community, whether it be all the different committees we sit on, the employees, the 10, the 15, the 20, the 25 years, just what makes all the cogs keep in motion, you know? You just, you don't give it a thought, and so that's really been insightful to see. And 25 years is quite a, quite a deal.
Any other comments before we move on? Okay. A few minutes, we'll take up. Item H. H, H is general, H.
Three is the 11:15 time, sir.
Let's take up.
I'm sorry, I misheard.
Let's take up H3, Health and Social Services, option for the Big Valley Facility.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Melody Brawley, Lassen County Health and Social Services Director. And I'm back to give you an update. I can't report a whole lot of progress, but thank you to Mr. Albaugh. I did speak with Jessica Bowman, who's Superintendent of the Big Valley District. And she gave us a quote of $1,000 per month for the large classroom at the Aiden School, plus two other, two additional classrooms and the use of the common area and restrooms and that. And if one of our partners, if we were to lease the place and one of our partners decided not to come with us, then we could have the large classroom on the end there, which is frankly beautiful, I'd like to have that one for myself. Great view off of the Ash Creek Wilderness. And then one additional classroom and the use of the common area and the restrooms for $750 a month. I did ask for square footage, but Mike hasn't had a chance to get back to me yet, so I don't know what that runs for square foot, but it's a pretty nice building. It's been well-maintained, it's ADA accessible, plenty of parking. Has a few issues, there's a preschool on the ground, so we would have to meet with sex offenders somewhere else if that was a fee developed by and of, most of them tend to be here in Susanville because they can access services easier. At the moment, we're paying as our share of the rent and operating costs at the One Stop there in Bieber, $720.48 a month. That includes utilities, except for the internet, janitorial and other operational costs. So we, when you have a lot of people in one office, you kind of figure out how to share the cost of a copy machine instead of everyone having a separate copy machine. Those kinds of things, we roll them together and we figure out what it costs and we divide those up. Pete mentioned to me that there might be space at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Bieber. He looked at it and described it to me, and I don't think it would work. It's not really available on any kind of a full-time basis, and we'd have to be sharing it with others, which is kind of a HIPAA issue for us, so we'd like to have a little more secure space than that. Pete was not able to get any quotes for putting a modular on the lot at this point, so we continue to work on this. And I will be meeting with the, all of the Family Resource Centers and Aurora staff tomorrow to begin discussions on where the Affordable Care Up is taking all of us. Can I answer any questions or any further directions?
The only question I have, if you get a chance to talk with the Superintendent on how long was the term of the lease you could get on that street property, if this was up for your discretion or not?
No, I think we both sort of assumed it could be as long as we need it to be. I think, I don't think she has any plans to return to that school as a school just yet.
I don't think so, I mean, the numbers aren't there.
Most of our other leases are three to five years, and we probably would do a similar arrangement if that, if we decided to lease the school.
So you're just going to use the space where your county-based service is not for Lassen as a stop?
Well, there's room there to move the entire One Stop over there, but as you heard, a lot of people connected with the Family Resource Center don't want to go over to Aiden because it's too far. We're already transporting most of our clients, so transporting them that additional 12 miles over and 12 miles back is not an issue for us. There's room there for all of us to be there if the Family Resource didn't want to come. The advantage to this site is that there's room there for the Aurora Network to have a presence, which has really been a struggle at the One Stop there in Bieber. In fact, generally, they've been pushed off to the library or the Veterans Hall, or in some cases, when the library was down, they kind of started doing one-on-ones instead of being able to have groups. And groups are a lot more efficient way, and you get a lot more interaction with groups, so they tend to like those a little better.
Hasn't Aurora Network out there been meeting in the library?
Yes, except for when the library was down because of the issue with the heating system. Yeah. Anything else? Oh, sorry.
Can we help, it's just had three copiers donated, two for you and one we're donating for these meetings. Would you be interested?
As far as Health and Social Services, we have copiers. I don't know about the Family Resource Centers, whether they would want to have a copier of their own or not, or...
They've been donated, can we help? Two for you and one for here. So give me a call or if you want them, I mean, they're there.
I'm going to ask Ms. Brawley to specifically keep me in the loop on that, if you would please. I'd like to know the specific nature of any relationship there.
Oh, relationship on Aiden or me?
No, between the county and receiving a donation, can we help? I just want to make sure our roles are clearly defined. That's all.
I attended ethics training last Friday. You're a top novelist.
You've donated stuff for 10 years, so...
We appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was just a discussion. So is there any other comments before we move on? Public comment on this before we move on? Okay, thanks, Melody. All right, we're gonna take up item D3, our 11:15 item.
I'll go ahead and take that one, Mr. Chairman, I had promised, Mr. Anderson, I would do that. As you well know, the county has the CDBG program and a couple of different grant application program or grant programs under CDBG. And ordinarily, what would happen is if someone wanted to apply for one of those benefits, essentially, they would do it and it would never come before you, really. And so that would be handled administratively through Ms. Aguilar and Building and Planning Services and Community Development, or I don't think they use that name anymore. And so it essentially would never come before this Board. But for one application that has been presented and the applicants are present, Mr. Nick and, is it Wendy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nick and Wendy McBride. And they are applicants under one of the grant programs for CDBG. And they propose to acquire funds for the development of a business within the city of Susanville. To be specific, the city of Susanville does not administer any CDBG program. The county is essentially administering that program for them. And so really, and as it's laid out in the documents in support of the Agenda Item, when there's an individual who has some participation in the program, then they, there's a federal issue as it relates to conflict of interest that must be dealt with. In this case, Mr. McBride serves, as you well know, as a member of Susanville City Council. And so this is a great example of, you get a little extra scrutiny if you choose to try and serve the public. And so essentially, because Mr. McBride serves on the city council and because the city council essentially has ceded the authority to participate in this program to the county, it's viewed under the federal guidelines that he may have some ability to influence the decision-making on his particular grant application. That would generally be a disqualifying conflict, as it were, whether any such influence ever occurred or not, and we certainly have no evidence of that. But there is an exception to that under the program guidelines, and that is where if the council for the entity, in this case, the county, that would be me, agrees to waive the conflict and you folks approve the application, then it can go forward. And I have lodged with you and also with the program a letter of my personal assent that it occur. Any particular conflict, in my view, is too attenuated, and I don't view it as something that should disqualify Mr. McBride from participating in the program as detail in his application. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Maybe we just fortify those comments a little bit, Karen has a few comments.
I hope I laid it out adequately.
Very much so. If you don't mind, I'm gonna correct just a few of those statements. The county does not run the CDBG program on behalf of the city. Essentially, what the state CDBG program allows for us to do is to extend the boundaries of our programs into the city of Susanville when there is a letter from the city administrator stating that effect and that the loans and the program income that we receive off of them from the payments will stay... them from the payments will stay with the county, so that they're aware that we are doing the programs. Now, if the city at any point decides to run any of the programs that we offer to city businesses, we then have to notify the businesses that are in the city that might be applying to us that they're no longer eligible.